The Planning and Zoning Board will come to order for Wednesday, November 15. It is now 6:05, a little late getting our infrastructure tuned up here, but we're there. Tonight, we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to go back and approve a stack of minutes that we just weren't able to get to because of a lot of circumstances. So we'll do that first. And as we work through them, I'll just ask the board if you have any remembrances out of those minutes that you'd like to talk about, address, correct, whatever. And then we'll go on to our task at hand for rezoning parcels. So we are now in the business of roll call. Renee? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Stroud.
Present.
Mr. Sharp.
Present.
Dr. Miller. Ms. Gennicore. Ms. Denny.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Russell.
Here. Okay. We're now in that part of the meeting that is public participation. Is there anything, anybody in the public would like to raise their hand and bring before us something to talk about that we haven't addressed? Seeing none, we move on to old business. And we don't have any, so we move to new business down through the agenda. And now we're down to Board Matters, and we're going to talk about approving meeting minutes for December 7. You have in your data pack that set of minutes, and you had a chance to read them, remember them, and they were quite detailed. I recommend taking this set of minutes and stacking them in your keep-it file, because one of these days when we have to talk about lot splits again, it might be good reference material. And so, how should we do this?
Mr. Chairman.
Let me just see if there's any discussion about December 7 minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the December 7 minutes as printed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
We have a second. Renee, would you call the motion? Call or roll, please.
Mr. Stroud.
For.
Mr. Sharp.
For.
Ms. Denny.
For.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Now, for the new members' benefit, what I usually do is we have discussion, and then I ask for a motion. And then when the motion is on the floor and properly seconded, I ask for a roll call. I don't waste time. A lot of other chairmen, chairpersons, the mayor included, they'll get to that, they'll ask for the motion, then they'll say, is there any further discussion? And off you go again for another 15 minutes. You don't need to do that. You already had the discussion. If you didn't, you should have got your aura in the water while we were discussing in the sermon. Okay. Next is the minutes for July 26.
I do have a discussion on that.
Go.
I noticed that on page three or four, when we talk about 2C, we said that Ms. Gennicore seconds the motion to approve and then says she votes against it. So it didn't make sense to me.
I recall that specifically.
Did it happen?
Yeah, it did happen that way.
Well, okay, then something happened in the...
This was the confusing...
It was a confusing, yes, because we were...
Yeah. As I recall, what happened is Ms. Gennicore seconded the motion just for purposes of advancing it to bring it to a vote. And sometimes members will do that.
Okay, that's cool.
So that's what happened there.
Okay. Yeah, sometimes there's a hesitancy, a big pause after you have the motion, big pause, no second. So she just moved it along. Okay, we get it. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the July 26 meeting as written.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Renee, call or roll. Call the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Okay, now that moves us down to the minutes for September 13, 2023. And we're now in discussion. If you have anything to say about it or raise an issue, now's the time. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for meeting September 13 as printed.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that motion for those minutes.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. All those minutes have been approved, and they now go into the records. We move down to the Conferential Plan Amendments, and the first parcels we're going to address are Ocean Court. But before we get into that, I had a question here. Okay. Kyle, do you have any... Would you like to just lay the groundwork for what we're doing with these? Because I'm going to move through them pretty quickly unless we want to hold up and talk.
Sure. So just some background. I believe most of you are pretty familiar with this project, except for maybe Mr. Sharp. Starting in 2019, the city started to rezone non-conforming residential uses in C-1 zoning classifications, which occurred because I believe it was 2016 when the special exception for residential uses in C-1 was removed from the code. So we have gone through and done three phases so far. This will be the fourth, the first one in, I believe, over a year. So this is the first one since I've been here that we've done, and I think we're going to try to build on this momentum and knock these out. So we're working our way down in the city. A lot of these are adjacent to previously rezoned properties. We've got a total of 66 parcels that I'm going to be talking about tonight. We do have one request to not be included that I just received today that I will mention when we get to it. And then we had one additional property that was a standalone property that they wanted to be removed pretty early on. They just happened to call about it as I was preparing this, so they were no longer included.
That's going to be a story. We'd like to hear that when we get to it.
Yeah. And just to mention it, we mailed notices to the property owners on Halloween, 10/31, which is within the 14-day notice period. And we had the newspaper ad was posted on 11/1. So there's a 10-day requirement in Florida statute for a legal ad, and we were well within that as well. So, yeah, we have noticed this properly, and we're ready to get moving.
Okay. This was... We continue on then with the cleaning up of the special exception issue that we created a long time ago. Okay, so the first group is Ocean Court. We're going to talk about and enact, I recommend enactment, of a small-scale future land use map amendment. And then following that, you always come along with a zoning amendment. So before you can change zoning, you have to make sure it's compatible with the land use map. Land use map comes first. So we have in the data pack a description of the land use map amendment, where it's located. Is there any conversation about this parcel?
I will just also add, I didn't say this earlier, these are all going to be C-1 to R-2. Both the flu map designation and the zoning classification will be going from C-1 to R-2. There is one that maybe we can discuss, should be R-3, but we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Very well. Is there any other discussion or question among ourselves?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Sure.
Is the county responsible for any of this stuff being zoned the way it currently is? I know we've only been incorporated as a city for so long, but is any of this the result of any actions by the county?
Not as far as I'm aware. I don't know if Dave is aware. Yeah, I think it was when it was incorporated, maybe a little after it was given. I have heard that the intention was at one point to have North Atlantic sort of be a commercial corridor, and it didn't really work out that way.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I understood. I just was curious how far back this did.
Yeah, yeah. I don't believe the county has had any involvement.
All right. Yeah, you could see the history of the zonings and rezonings over the years on pages 13 through 18 of the Little Green Book. So, yeah, I agree with that. I don't think the county had anything to do with this. We zoned it ourself.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the board? All right, can I have a motion to recommend approval of the future land use map for Ocean Court?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Ocean Court rezoning from C-1 to R-2.
Let's rephrase that, please. We're not rezoning right now, we're changing the land use map.
Changing the land use map amendment.
There you go.
My apologies.
You recommend approval of the land use map amendment?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And Renee, call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Okay. We now recommend the approval of the future land use map. We now go to Part B of this item for the zoning map. So we now change the zoning with this recommendation. May I have... Well, let me have any discussion? Okay, now's the time to get your aura in the water, and if not, we'll have to ask for a motion to recommend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend ordinance 02-2024 for approval.
Is there a second?
03, isn't it?
It's 02, 2024.
Okay.
Yeah, let me help you out.
Number B. On the other page. Oh, there it is. Okay, yeah.
Now everybody's on the page? Anything else? All right, may I have a motion to approve or disapprove? Don't be bashful.
Well, I think we already have a motion. I'll second it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Steve gave us a motion.
Okay. I'm busy quarterbacking this thing, so sometimes I lose my page. I depend on all of you to help me. All right, we're ready to call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Okay, one down, seven to go. We now move to Part Two of the agenda, or Number Two. It's called Park Villas. And again, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to recommend approval of the small-scale future land use map amendment. Is there any discussion about that? Anybody see any peculiarity with that? You have the overhead in front of you, and you can see where it's situated, the parcel is situated within the city.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys want more context, or the surrounding zoning to the north is C-1. That's the commercial plaza with cannibal meats and delis. And then to the east is R-2. To the south is another property that's included. So it is contiguous to R-2 zoning.
Okay. Anything else to add?
No.
Questions or comments? Seeing no indication, may I have a motion to recommend approval?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve ordinance 03-2024.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Renee, call or roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to...
Of course.
...have a word. I just wanted to make sure, I know there's just a handful of people here, but these are public hearing items, so I don't know if you have any speaker cards or not, but you do need to take public input.
Okay.
If there's anybody that wants to speak, again, there's only a handful of people here, so I'd...
Thank you for that.
Mention that.
So here's a way I'll do that. While we're working down through here, I'll look up, and we won't do speaker cards tonight because we only have a small number of the public at large. So just raise your hand if you've got a question or a comment, and we'll recognize that. Seeing one, sir. Come forward, identify your name and address.
If you want, you can...
We can... Well, that's all right. We can fill it out after the fact, but... Thank you, Jamie. We'll proceed now. Go ahead to the podium.
James Hale, I live at 110 Washington Avenue. The house numbers you have on here start at 106 Washington Avenue, and there is a property at 104, which is part of Park Villas. It's right at North Atlantic Avenue and Washington Avenue.
All right, does that complicate anything we're trying to do tonight?
We'll have to add it. It is included on the exhibit, so I think we just need to add it to the ordinance title, which we can do between now and the city council meeting.
All right, we do a pen and ink change to the agenda.
And I should make sure it's in the... It's possible when I copied it over, I missed it, so I'll just need to check the ordinance title, but it won't complicate anything.
Okay.
But thank you for that.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Does that cover what you're concerned? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
So that was 104. All right, good catch. That's why we do this, go through it again. And is there now anything else? I don't see any indications of more questions, so I'll go to the board. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to... I'll ask for a motion. Don't be bashful.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve the ordinance 03-2024.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Thank you. Renee, please call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
And for. All right, that moves us down to the B portion of this item, ordinance 42024. And we're now addressing the zoning map amendment. Looking back over the audience, is there any indication of a question or a comment? Very well. Seeing none, I'll ask the board for a question or a comment.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like on Part B of this, we also need to add that 104.
Thank you. We will do so. Pen and ink change to our documentation, and it'll be corrected and formal before it goes to the council. Anything else? All right, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve 04-2024.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Thank you. And Secretary, please call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Okay, we've now covered Park Villa. We're going to go to Oaks condominium. Again, that's ordinance 052024. And we're talking again, going through the same drill, a small-scale future land use map amendment. And you see that small-scale map amendment in front of you. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing no indication, I'll ask the board.
Yes.
Yeah, if you want to go first, I also have a comment.
Go ahead.
So a couple of things, actually. I do want to just point out that there's four parcels listed here. We did notice this to each individual unit, so everyone was informed. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, Renee, can you bring up the zoning map? This is something to consider. As I said earlier, everything tonight is going C-1 to R-2. And do you know where this is? Can you locate this, or do you want me to help you? It's on the west side of A1.
Just put the white arrow on it. Right there.
Right here.
Yeah? Right...
I would just point out, it won't make much of a material difference, but for the sake of not doing any spot zoning, the property to the west is actually R-3, not R-2. So I think it would be worth considering going to R-3 on this one, and that's, I believe, a change we could make relatively easily. Anthony, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just something for the board to discuss. We currently have it as going to R-2, but R-3 would avoid any spot zoning.
So you're going to take it... In the present documentation, it goes from C-1 to R-2.
That's correct.
And you're recommending that we change that to R-3?
I believe so. It's not adjacent to any R-2, but it is adjacent to R-3. And like I said, materially, it won't make much of a difference as far as density or zoning requirements, but just for the sake of not having a spot of R-2 in a sea of R-3 and C-1.
Refresh me a memory. What's the difference between R-2 and R-3? Is it just the height?
Yeah, I think it's the height and, gosh, off the top of my head, they're not too different.
I think the setbacks are the same.
Yeah, setbacks are the same. They're really not very different.
Okay. Okay, well, how does the board feel? You want to take it, change that to R-3 to make it more...
Oh, I see.
...compatible? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have no objection.
It seems to make sense, so you don't have another situation where spots zone them.
Yeah, very well.
I agree.
Okay, then we'll change that to R-2 to R-3, and pen and ink change, and then it'll be corrected in the submission to the council. So we're now entertaining a motion to approve...
Well, wait.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that it is called the Oaks. In the verbiage in A and B, it's described as the Ocean Oaks condominium.
Yes, actually, I did, I meant to bring that up as well. We did catch that, and we're going to make that change as well.
Okay, cool.
Okay, it's Ocean Oaks?
It actually is the Oaks. It's called Ocean Oaks in the title of the ordinance, but we're going to correct that to just read the Oaks.
Well, you've got it corrected in the minutes.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. And in number three, it says the Oaks, but when you read A and B, if you read on on the...
There's a scrivener error in the title. It just inserted the word ocean. It should just be Oaks condo.
Okay, just correct that error.
That's been corrected, and the property owners were... All the property owners were noticed by mail.
Okay, any comment from the public? Seeing none, comment, further comment from the board? All right, very good. Now we'll ask for a motion to approve with the discussed correction.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance 05-2024 with the stated changes.
All right, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Thank you. Renee, call or roll, please.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. All right, now down to Part B, we're going to probably consider the same correction, scrivener error correction for the Oaks condominium and in reference to the zoning map. So we're going to change that recommendation to R-3. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They mirror each other.
Now I'll ask if there's anything from the public. Seeing none, is there anything else from the board? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve ordinance 06-2024 with the two recommended changes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you. And Renee, call or roll, please.
Mr. Sharp.
Approved.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. All right. So we have finished with item three. Now we're going to number four, that's parcels between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue. Anything you want to give us as a lead-in to that?
We have a visual on that map.
Yeah, so once the visual's up, I'll just point out that the parcels to the south on Adams, the westernmost along North Atlantic are of commercial uses, so they were not included, as you'll see on the aerials.
Okay. Again, we're talking about the future land use map now, and I'll ask for comments or questions from the public. Seeing no indication, then we'll ask the board if there's anything to add. Okay. Seeing no indication, I'll ask for a motion to recommend approval for the future land use map for parcels between Washington Avenue and Adams Avenue. Ordinance 72024. Evidence 72024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend approval for ordinance number 072024.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Renee, call or roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For. Okay. Now moving down to Part B of the agenda item, that's ordinance number eight, 2024. That's the zoning map. Is there any question or comment from the public? All right, seeing none from the board. Is there anything else to address from the board? Is there anything else to address from the board? Okay, seeing no indication. Renee, please call a, may I have a motion, please? Don't have a motion yet.
I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 08-2024 as is.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you. Now, Renee, you can call a roll.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Mr. Miller, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Russell?
For. And then that moves us down to item five, which is the parcels between Adams Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. And that's ordinance 09-2024, future land use map. Any comments or corrections to that? Any comments or correction to that? Kyle?
Yes, one thing to note, if you go over one more, Renee, you can see on the screen, this was a conversation literally today, this afternoon. Someone called and does not wish to be included in this. They would like to stay C1. I suspect it's they have a vacation rental, and the seven-day minimum, you know, does not apply in C1, and it does in R2. So, I believe that was their stated reason. But that's the only one that's requested it so far, but just wanted to note that.
All right, how does the board? Well, let me ask if there's a comment from the public. Interesting. Is there any comment from the board about that? Okay, seems like a straightforward business decision. I'm glad they didn't pick one in the middle.
But it's currently a residential house that they...
Yeah, it's currently a residential use that's rented out.
And they want it to stay C1 so they can, they don't have to adhere to the...
Correct.
Rental limits.
Yes, so that, yes, that was also the reason given for another property that's not even on here, because they called about it, like I said, without even knowing this was happening. But that was also their reason. I found that that's typically the reason if people want to remain C1.
Okay, is the board, is the board inclined to ride along with that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval for ordinance number 09-2024 as written.
So, including the 107?
Does that include Kyle's recommend to take out the star?
Were you recommending that we take it out?
I don't know, Dave, are they, I mean, can they, well, I don't know, can they?
Actually, you know...
If they request it, is that kind of a given?
Is it take it out or put it in? I think we're...
I hadn't experienced this in the past.
Our practice has been...
Let's talk about it this way. Let's talk about omitting that law.
Omitting, and if a property owner requests to remove it, our practice has been to take that out. And we've, that's what we've done in the first three phases. So, you know, and it's, you know, I think the board can do whatever they want to do, and we'll just, we'll just put it up to the council and let them make the decision, but that's...
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please? So, is it fair to assume that there are other parcels in that same plot that are being used as Airbnb?
I would, not knowing these parcels that well, but I can't, I can't give you a guaranteed answer, but I would assume that is the case.
So, here's my gut, and that is that if by not including that in the rezoning, we're giving them permission to not adhere to certain rental restrictions, and anybody else in that area would have to adhere to that, doesn't seem fair to me.
Yeah, there is a fairness issue, and also, we need to look at, when they bought this property, they bought this property in the commercial district, a residential use, which they could, which they were not subject to the seven-day minimum when they purchased it. That was what they purchased, and that was, and they had some assumptions based on that. Now, the city's coming along and saying, well, we're going to rezone you to R1, and you're going to lose that ability to rent for seven days. So, I'm not sure it rises to the level of a taking. I mean, that's something Anthony would have to opine on. But, you know, there's certainly going to be some pushback, perhaps, from some of the property owners, saying, oh, that's not what I bought. When I bought this, I was buying X. Now, the city wants to change it to Y. You know, does it, again, does it rise to the level of lawsuit or anything? I don't think so, but that's, you know, that's a...
And I also do want to just clarify, when I spoke with them, I did inform them of the risks of staying C1 as far as the non-conforming aspects. You know, if they were to have, the building were to be destroyed, they couldn't rebuild as a residential unit. So, they are aware of that risk and, you know, made a business decision in requesting to be not included.
And they accepted that risk?
Yes, yes, so they're aware.
Anthony, do you have any thing that you want to add or recommend?
I mean, as Kyle said, I mean, the dilemma is that if the residential structure is destroyed, it's going to have to become commercial, right? And that's the whole reason, impetus for going through this process is to try to protect their residential use. Now, you get a situation where the property owner wants to protect their vacation rental ability to rent for less than a minimum of seven days. I mean, one thought, again, I just heard about this tonight, is there a possibility where you can treat it as a non-conforming use? If they have an existing vacation rental?
I think that's what we've done.
That they are clearly, you know, renting for, you know, less than seven days. So, they can get maybe the benefit of both, and that they are zone residential to protect the ability to maintain a residential dwelling structure. And in this particular case, since they've identified a vacation rental that they're applying for less than seven days, trying to preserve that as a non-conforming use.
Yeah, so I'm going to break it down for my, and my simple math, simple English is that. So, I think what Anthony is saying is if they have an established bed and breakfast, or bed, excuse me, Airbnb prior to this ordinance going into effect, then they would be essentially grandfathered as that, as that use, that Airbnb use would be grandfathered. And if it, but it would be subject to non-conforming, or be considered non-conforming. But it would be subject to, we have non-conforming provisions in our code, such as if they cease operations of a non-conforming use for, I can't recall what it is, 60 days or 90 days, then they lose those non-conforming rights. So, yeah, I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly a way to look at it.
What happens if they sell, if the property changes hands?
I mean, typically, non-conforming, a non-conforming use runs with the land.
If there's a continuation.
Yeah, it runs with the land rather than the owner.
Okay.
What about getting a mortgage? You're getting, you can't get a mortgage on a non-conforming property, can you?
And that's what, that's what's, that's a big impetus behind this entire effort is we've been approached over the years by people who are trying to get refinanced or trying to sell. And the underwriters come ask Kyle and I, if this house gets destroyed, can they rebuild it? And our answer is, well, it's subject to non-conforming provisions, it may not be able to be, and so...
Think about the situation they're in now.
Yeah.
Okay, the residential use is a non-conforming use. Because it's C1 property, so they're, they currently have a non-conforming residential use.
But we're trying to fix it so they can get a mortgage.
In a non-conforming structure, probably, because it's related, because it's built for residential standards. So, they're already in a non-conforming situation. My thought was, you can make the residential use conforming by rezoning the property, right, as presented. And since they haven't identified an existing bed and Airbnb...
Yeah.
Allow that to continue as a non-conforming use. So, the non-conforming use becomes more limited if this ordinance passes. It's only the vacation rental that's the non-conforming use rather than the whole residential use that they find themselves in right now.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Seems like a better situation, but, I mean, if the property owner wants out, then that's something that the board, you know, and the council can consider, but they may not have been, they may not have considered the possibility that they might end up in a better situation if you treat their Airbnb as a non-conforming use.
Right.
Yeah, and I did, I didn't communicate that, so that is something that we will need to follow up with them on.
So, let me see if I've got it right. If we fix this for everybody else and leave the starred unit as is, when it sells, the new mortgage is going to be a question mark. Did I get that right? They won't be able to get a mortgage, or they'll, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but they'll have... Questions from the mortgage company.
Possibly be an issue with the underwriter.
Okay. Does it make sense to set this one aside and ask that property owner to come in here or at least reconsider the consequences that didn't get discussed during the original discussion?
Lamar, are you suggesting set just that parcel aside or set the entire ordinance aside?
Entire item, the entire item. You won't have to go out, that way you don't have to redo a whole thing. You can still use this when you bring it forward again in the next meeting or so. And by then, we'll have had a discussion with that property owner to see if they fully understand the consequences.
Yeah, I mean, we, my thought on that is that we've already advertised everything. So, I would, perhaps it might be more expedient to have the board make a recommendation on the everything this evening, and we could have a discussion with the, with the property owner between now and when we take it to first reading to the city council. And if the property owner is not amenable, then we could either pull that parcel from the ordinance before it goes to the council.
Well, the way we're going to talk, the way we have it now is that parcel is pulled.
The parcel is what?
I'm sorry. It's pulled already. It's, it's...
Well, it's in there.
It's in there.
Currently, it's in there, yeah.
So, if we send it forward to the council, they're out. It's omitted from the re...
No, not necessarily.
Yeah, so it's currently, as written, is included.
That's right.
So, for, you know, for some reason, the property owner never responded. They would be rezoned.
Yeah, but we would, I think the board could take action on it tonight as we're recommending, depending on what the board's will is. And we could get with the property owner before his first reading with the city council and adjust the ordinance then, rather than bring it back to the city, excuse me, bring it back to the P and Z, and that'll delay it by at least a month.
All we're doing is making a recommendation.
Yeah.
And our recommendation is, just do it for me one more time. It has what, it has the star on it or not on it?
Well, the star is just to set it, set it apart, just to note it. I mean, I would say our recommendation is to proceed as written, and then if, you know, should the, yeah, include it. Should the property owner, you know, discuss this and still decide to be omitted, we can bring that up at the first reading.
Then the property owner would have to come back later. If they really want to do this, they have to come back later and ask for a separate rezon.
Right, yeah, if they decided a year down the line, they could reply to rezon.
Well, that makes sense. Let's go ahead and do it that way, and the property owner can deal with it down the line. Anything else from the board? Good discussion.
My opinion is if you're going to do it, do it all.
Yeah.
That's our intent with all these properties, so if there's individual issues, we take those up later.
Okay. Anything else from the public? Seeing no indication, anything else from the council? From the board? Hearing no further discussion, then, I'd like to ask for a motion to recommend...
There's already a motion on the floor.
Okay, I forgot. It was, or second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Now, Renee, call them.
John Price. Vice Chair, John Price. Excuse me. Mister.
You can call a roll now, Renee.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Mr. Russell?
For.
And now, we go through the same thing for the zoning map. Same, same conditions, same discussion. Any additional discussions just because it's a zoning map? Shouldn't be. All right. I'm looking to the public, seeing no indication. Looking to the board, no indication. May I have a recommendation for, for recommendation to council?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve ordinance number 10-2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Now, you may call a roll, Renee.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Mr. Russell?
For.
Okay, good discussion. Moving to item six, this would be the Cannavaro Brickers Apartments. Again, we have a, can you put the overhead up for us, Renee, so we can see where that one is?
Would you guys want the aerial, this aerial or the zoning map? Is there one you would prefer?
I guess it's the aerial.
Just give the...
Okay, so just stay on the PowerPoint.
That's it.
Okay.
So, this is the Cannavaro Brickers condominium, similar to the Oaks. Notices were mailed out to individual unit owners.
Let's see, I'm trying to get away...
These are apartments, though, right?
They're called the Cannavaro Brickers Annex Apartments, but they're a condominium.
They're condominiums, okay. All right.
All right. Is there any comment or question from the public? Seeing none, I'll ask the board if you have any further comments or questions. Okay, may I have a motion? This is for the land use amendment 11-2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for recommendation of approval for ordinance 11-2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Chairman, I second that.
Thank you. And Renee, call roll, please.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Mr. Russell?
For.
That takes us down to the zoning map amendment. Any questions from the public? Seeing no indications, any questions or comments from the board? All right. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept ordinance number 12-2024 as is.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Do we, do we do 11?
We did 11-24, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't say the wrong thing.
11-2024. 12-2024.
I'm with you, I get confused.
I missed 11, I'm sorry.
You were sleeping.
I wrote it down, and I still ask.
Yeah, it takes a village. All right. We're now completed with item...
I need a call roll.
Do you want to call a roll?
Call roll, please.
So, Mr. Stroud? So Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For.
All right. Now, that brings us to item seven, which is 102 East Central Boulevard. You want to put that one on the overhead for us?
This isn't a condominium or anything. This is kind of a lone parcel that's still C1. It's next to the, the mini storage that is zoned C1, and then the properties to the east are residential, and they're zoned R2.
Yeah, I'm used to referring to that whole thing as Central Boulevard, so, got it. Okay. Anything from the public? Seeing no indication, now to the board. Questions? Comments? Okay. May I have a motion on 13-2024?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend approval for ordinance number 13-2024.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Renee call the roll.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For.
All right, that moves us down to part B, which is the zoning map. And I'll just ask if there are any other questions or comments. May I have a motion?
We might need to ask the public if there was any comments from the public.
Yeah, I looked around, I'm-
I know, there probably isn't, but-
For the record, is, I see, I see no comments, no indication of comment from the public. So then we move down to the board. Now, where are we? We're asking for a motion.
On, yeah, B.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of ordinance number 14-2024.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Renee call the board, call the roll.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For.
All right, that brings us to Madison Avenue. That parcel is 108, 112, 114, 116. Again, I want to put that on the overhead. All right. Madison Avenue.
So that's the property directly behind that strip center that has the Vargas in it and that kind of-
That's correct, so it's, it's that property. And so, for context, we really wanted to address that, that property, the, so there's two properties here. The three to the east, there were a few, we need to do some more research into the, how the lots were split on those three, so we didn't want to include them at this time. So that's why there's just these two for now.
Now, are those people who had their houses burnt down, are they in a situation now where they can't do anything because it's not zoned residential?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've had discussions, matter of fact, the owner is sitting right behind me. We've been talking to him about that. So they are going to be able to rebuild based on some small modifications to the, to the building itself. It was a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming use. So the non-conforming structure is a simple fix. Just, just the rebuild is going to stay out of the setback area. There used to be a, kind of a covered patio on the west side of that building. Well, we're going to, it's not going to be rebuilt completely, so they'll be able to maintain setbacks. So the non-conforming structure issue goes away. And with this rezoning, the non-conforming use issue will go away, so.
So do we have the right parcels in this data pack?
Yes, it's, it's two different parcels. It's the one directly behind it.
I'm counting four parcels, but I see two on the overhead.
There's, there's, they're duplexes, I believe, so there's four addresses, but only two parcels. Yeah.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
So my question is, I'm the one who owns 108 and 112.
Would you like to come up here and get yourself on the record, and it helps you as well as us? Your name again?
My name is Giuseppe Conoschenti. I'm the owner of 108 and 112 Madison.
Okay.
No, my concern, we've been talking to Mr. Dicky for a while regarding rebuilding what was damaged, and the setbacks, the commercial space, the commercial building is, it's right on the, between the commercial building and my property, it's only like three feet. So basically, they are non-conforming almost because the setbacks is very low. So, but I just want to make sure I can rebuild what was there before, with the minor changes we discussed. Because, you know, I like to get it done. I want to make the property look better, or, you know, to make it look better what it was before.
Is there a setback question, is that it?
Well, the, the structure was non-conforming due to the setback with the west property line, but we've, we've talked to Giuseppe, and we're going to, I think we're going to make a small tweak to the building, and it will, it will be able to meet the eight-foot side setback requirement. So, yeah, the setback issue is being addressed.
So if, yeah, if that's, I have no problems to move ahead and to change the zoning to residential.
Okay.
So do we need to word our recommendation a particular way, or can we just, are we set with the wording as it is?
I think the, I think just like we've handled all the other ones, we'll be fine. We'll handle-
Yeah, we have a good understanding.
Yeah, we'll handle Giuseppe's issues.
Meaning that I will, you know, very, you know, the little change we need to do, it's not, it doesn't affect much the use of the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? Good catch. And I'll ask for a recommendation for the future land use map,
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that, or I make a motion that we recommend approval ordinance 15-2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Renee call the roll.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For.
Again, item B is the zoning map amendment. And questions are the same. Anything from the public? Seeing no indication, anything from the board? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend approval ordinance number 16-2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. Renee call the roll, please.
Mr. Sharp.
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud.
For the motion.
Ms. Denny.
For the motion.
Mr. Price.
For the motion.
Mr. Russell.
For.
Okay. That brings us to that part of the agenda that says reports and open discussion. Does anybody have anything they need to bring before us to talk about or put on future agendas or anything like that?
I'd like to just update the board on one item. I believe it was at your last meeting, the board recommended to the council to approve the mixed-use ordinance. That has been transmitted to the state as required. They have 30 days to review it. And we should hopefully be getting, well, hopefully we're getting no comments back from them the last week of November. So if that's the case, we can bring that to the council for second reading and adoption at the December meeting. So hopefully in December, we'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll be getting really close. I will say that we are, if you recall, that ordinance also discussed live-work units. And one of the things that that specific section of the ordinance talks about is preparing what are called land development regulations for mixed, for live-work units. And that's really kind of the nuts and bolts of how those live-work units are going to work and how we're going to administer them. So we met with the city manager today. We're going to be preparing some, a draft ordinance with the assistance of the city attorney that'll spell all those meat, kind of the nuts and bolts of live-work units. We'll be getting that back to the board. It'll be in ordinance form, so we'll be making a recommendation on that. I'm not sure if it'll be done by December, but probably, hopefully no later than January, we'll be getting that back to you. So, so be, be on the lookout for that as well. That's, that's all, anything?
The last meeting also, the board made a recommendation to eliminate parking minimums for bars and restaurants, and council will be discussing that on Tuesday of next week. So should be an interesting conversation. And then, you know, based on how that conversation goes, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you wanted to discuss, have a broader conversation, you know, besides just bars and restaurants. So we can, we can have that conversation soon as well.